So we just did the roll call, right, Camille?
Yes.
So I can move on to our first order of business for this evening, and that is the appointment of Nancy Height-Nor to the planning board to fill the unexpired term of Ann Marie Tramella, which expires April 1, 2022. Do I have a motion? So moved. First.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
Trustee Howell.
In favor.
Trustee Lee. Did it go through? Gina?
Gina, you're on mute.
Trustee Lee?
In favor, I'm sorry.
Mayor Luise.
I am in favor.
May I say something, please?
Yeah.
May I say something, please? Since we have the pandemic, it's required that Nancy sign the oath book before she votes on any planning decisions. Would it be okay to have a page of the oath book emailed to her?
I would have no problem with that. I think that's fair.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Gary.
Thank you, Camille. Well, first, I would just like to, I would like to thank Ann Marie for so many, many years of service to the planning board and to the signing and ordering board. She has been a tremendous asset to both those boards over the years. She's been a tremendous asset to this village. She's been involved in so many iconic projects here at the village. So I'd just like to thank her for all her service and for all she's done. Then I would also like to thank Nancy for volunteering to take on this position, this role. Nancy is a 22-year resident of Tuckahoe with an extensive career in the business community. As right now, she's state agent for the Corkwell Pinker Company. She brings to this community and this grass of real estate industry and everything around. I'd like to welcome Nancy and I wish her success. Good luck. Good luck.
Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Is there any members of the board?
Mayor, I would also just like to thank Ann Maria and welcome Nancy.
Thank you.
Welcome, Nancy.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you all very much again.
Okay. Good? Anybody? Wow. Any other comments from the board? Okay. Let's move on to presentation. And that will be the two participants from the board, Mr. Frank DiMarco, who will give us the annual MS4 report. Frank, the floor is yours.
Hi, everybody. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Am I echoing?
No.
I ask that everybody that's not using their mics to play silence their Zoom page here. Otherwise, no one's going to bear any of this. I know I'm hard of hearing, but now I'm really able to hear. And this is really bothering me. But anyway, this is about the annual MS4 report. And what this is simply is an annual report that's given to the state government to find out what we're doing to protect our waterways. And what that simply means is when it rains, that water needs to go somewhere. So what it does, it finds its way to the catch bases that are along the curb line, that are sometimes at the end of a block or down a hill. And these catch bases collect all this rainwater. And what it does, there's a series of underground piping that leads all this water to our waterway. And what this MS4 is for is really to make sure that we're doing all that's required, that this water is safely directed to our waterway, our aquatic water. So we need to inspect it annually. We need to make the necessary repairs. We need to make sure there's never illicit discharge. I know years ago, I've known so many people that have changed their oil in their cars over these catch basins and let that oil run into the waterways. And that's exactly where it's going. That there's no dumping or littering, and that the waterways are clean and safe, all aquaic life. So each catch basin has a tag on it stating that it goes to our waterway. There's a number identifying each catch basin. And in our computers, in my database, I could tell which catch basin is attached to that number, where it leads to in our waterways, and which outfall, or what that outfall is, a series of several pipes that lead into our waterway. You could take a walk along the trail in the Bronx River, and you can see these series of pipes that lead into the waterway, whether it's on the Tuckahoe side. That's all Tuckahoe storm catch basins. On the Yonkers side, that's all the Yonkers storm catch basins. So someone needs to monitor this annually to make sure we're doing everything we possibly can to make sure that our waterways are safe. We have a questionnaire in the Department of Public Works that you could fill out if you have any questions, you have any concerns, or if you see anybody discharging illicitly. You know, please contact me at DPW. I have been called over the years, and I have gone out and given fines to those that have illicitly discharged. Does anybody have any questions? No? Does anybody hear me?
I hear you.
Okay, okay. I was like, wow, I just did that whole thing, and nobody heard me.
They're listening.
I heard you.
Okay, thank you, everybody. Any questions, let me know. Feel free to give me a call. But it's very important that I do this annually because people need to know what these catch basins do, where they lead to. You know, we have two lines in our made rows. We have the stormwater catch bases, and we have the sewers. They're two separate lines. They should never meet. And that's all I really have for this evening.
Thank you, Frank.
Okay.
Hello?
Where'd everybody go?
I don't know.
There's Omira.
I'm going to see this on SNL next week.
You might see it tonight at this rate.
There we go.
Okay, we're back.
We're back.
All right. That'll take us to our first order, well, second order of business, which is public hearings. And that is to consider a proposed local law prohibiting the sale of electronic nicotine delivery products in the village of Tuckahoe. Last month, we postponed that hearing because of the virus. This month, I would make a motion to then open this public hearing. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
Trustee Howell. Trustee Lee.
In favor.
Mayor Luise.
In favor. Just as a point of reference, we have received a correspondence from a gentleman by the name of James Calvin, who is the president of the New York Association of Convenience Stores. He, of course, is advocating that we do not prohibit the sale of e-vate cigarettes and their associated products here in the village because he believes that the New York state law that is going to be passed on May 18 of this year will do the job that is intended and that we should not supersede state law. But as we have been saying for the past few months, as we are waiting to see what the outcome of any pending litigation will be before we proceed with our local law. And with that, does anyone on the board have any comments they would like to make at this time?
I would like to talk about it with the board members privately because we're just getting emails now about that, if that's okay.
Sure, absolutely. Well, then I will make a motion to keep this public hearing open. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. David, you're muted. He's speaking.
Trustee Andino.
Mr. Mayor, there may be people online that'd like to speak about that.
Maybe the public would like to...
I was going to say, we have some agenda items. So you want to continue with the roll call?
Oh, maybe begin again? Shall I begin the roll call again?
Yeah, I would rather wait for their comments when they can address the board on agenda items.
We're keeping it going. Trustee Andino.
In favor.
In favor.
Trustee Lang.
Favor.
Trustee Howell.
In favor.
Trustee Lee.
In favor.
Mayor Luise.
In favor.
And that'll bring us to the next one, which is the approval of minutes of the April 13, 2020 meeting. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
In favor.
Trustee Lee.
In favor.
Mayor Luise.
In favor. And that will bring us to the first opportunity for anyone in the room to address the board on agenda items. So David, if you have someone out there that wants to talk to us about the electronic cigarettes, please let them in. Thank you.
Hello, Mike Dardano here.
Yes, Mike.
Hello, everyone. I just have a question regarding the, you're bringing on a consultant for the building department. So I wanted to ask you two things. One was, how can the chamber help with giving that group information to speed the process along and maybe save some time and money by gathering some information that could be funneled to them instead of having them having to interview or whatever they're going to do to get data regarding, you know, a plan or a change for the building department? And then, second, what about residents? Can residents come up with something that they can feed information into them quicker? Because, you know, with consultants, hours build up real quickly. And since we're trying to watch the budget, I just wanted to see if there's any way we can help to cut the cost down of bringing on a consultant like that.
Well, number one, if I can address your first question. And this was a conversation that we had with the chamber about a year ago. We would like to see a comprehensive packet put together for any new business owner that would encompass the building zoning codes and also the signing and ordering code. And sort of help new business owners navigate their way through, you know, getting their business up and running in the best way that they see possible. And not to see things get bogged down because they weren't familiar with the code, you know, and getting an ordering up or getting some type of modification to the interior of the establishment in a timely manner. So that's number one. That's what I would like to see, you know. You know, the most frequently asked questions, if we could answer those. We sit down with the consultant, members of the building department, and just iron these things out. And even some of the business owners here would be more than willing to sit down with us and have that conversation as we've had in this past year. But it's just a question of, you know, nailing it down, putting that packet together, and getting it out there to these new business establishments. Now, what was the second question, Mike? I'm sorry.
Oh, the second question, Greg, was regarding residents because the building department is not just for businesses.
Similar. Same thing should be happening in that department as well for residents. There's a welcome package. As a matter of fact, there's a new person, new resident that just moved in across the street yesterday, literally. And ideally, we should have a packet letting them know the sanitation schedule, some of the important phone numbers here in the village, the names of our department heads, their elected officials, so on and so forth. That is something also that we'd like to see.
So from the standpoint of the chamber, then, what we could do is, if we can grab, and I know where all that stuff is on the site, grab some of that stuff out as retains to business. Then if there's any changes that get recommended and get passed, those adjustments can be made. And then that part of the document is done with all the building code stuff for businesses. And then there's other assets that we can start putting together now so that when this is, you know, in a couple, it's going to take a little bit of time. But so that, say, by, I don't know, the end of the summer or the summer, whenever this is going to be done, we'll have done our part on the chamber side to have that information. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else out there who would like to address the board on any agenda items? No?
Yeah.
Hi, Greg.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm Virginia Marciano, 21st Circle. Hi, I have so much trouble with this Zoom stuff, but it's working right now. I just wanted to comment about the e-cigarettes. As a way, long time ago, like in college smoker, I know how difficult it is to quit. And I don't see anything redeeming about having the availability of these e-cigarettes in our village, in our town. I just don't. I mean, I could speak for 10 minutes, but that's basically the message. There's nothing redeeming about cigarettes. Look how hard this country has been trying for the last, how many decades, to get people to stop smoking. And we're going to be so in town. Really? I mean, that's about all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Appreciate that. My understanding is that, because from attending this home loaner, together, everything that was made, anti-tobacco, you know, years back, or selling, maybe the state of their aggressive, and of course, primarily kids who are dreaming. But one of those things, you know, I understand with it, we allow people to smoke, we allow the products, adults. Our adults, as well as all the addicts. So we have to get the consciousness, the reality, the prohibited, the game. Just to see if this is, it is, it's, 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 it's.
Yeah, just one more thing. They're showing the shadow of a doubt that there are people in these e-cigarettes that are every bit as dangerous, if not more so than we're to show. Do the math. That's it.
Okay, anyone else out there? Okay, any opportunity, first second, say, to address the board on agenda items. Okay. If anyone complains or asks questions, press motion number one. Is authorizing a consultant agreement with CNF Design LLC for Building Department Evaluation, Plan, Review, and Design Services. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
We're all for that. Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
Trustee Howell.
In favor.
Trustee Howell.
Oh, she's on mute.
In favor.
Trustee Lee.
In favor.
Trustee Lee.
In favor.
Mayor Luise.
I'm in favor. Resolution number two is authorized in terms of, shall I remember John Jensen for assessment year 2019 with the Street Address 36, under place, section 29, Block 4, Lot 23, in amount of $1,642. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Lang. Trustee Howell. Trustee Lee.
In favor.
Mayor Luise.
I'm in favor. Resolution number three is authorized to take the health measures into account with the county of Westchester, the county of Westchester, undertaking a community development program. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
In favor.
Trustee Lee.
In favor.
Mayor Luise.
In favor. And just as a sort of recap about this resolution, the county suspended this community development block program a few years ago. Have now started this program up. The intention of participating in this program was to generate money out of it to be had for. Side work prepared, other things. We're really looking forward, looking forward incredibly. David, is there anything you would like to add?
No. Not at this time. I think it's a fantastic program, and I'm really looking forward to putting some grant opportunities in. So I think it's definitely a good thing for the village.
I can't hear.
I think you just go to the roll call.
I think you just go to the roll call.
We did the roll call.
I couldn't hear it.
Now we're doing the fourth resolution. Doing the fourth resolution. Mayor.
Okay. Resolution number four is authorized in the amount of $3,858.62. Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
Trustee Howell.
In favor.
Trustee Lee.
Favor.
Mayor Luise.
In favor. Resolution number five is authorizing the request to allow village tax extension to pay their first half village tax until July 21, 2020 without penalty. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
Howell.
In favor.
Trustee Lee.
In favor.
Mayor Luise.
In favor. And many tax programs, nobody now, there's a federal tax well-issued, so we are holding that, let me go home, that allows us to, to our residents to pay. So, but it's all contingent. And that makes it, since authorization of selection from several property, as shown on section 11, filed in the office of the board. And in other words, this is authorizing the village to collect taxes for the upcoming budget year. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
Trustee Howell.
In favor.
Trustee Lee.
In favor.
Mayor Luise.
In favor. Okay. So that brings us to any decision, any items, so any members of the board who would like to discuss anything at this point.
Okay, that'll bring us to our department. Police, John Christian.
Well, Mayor and Board, I actually had a little report, but my audio was terrible, so I'm just going to defer. I had nothing earth-shattering tonight. So I would just prefer to defer to another meeting, if that's okay.
Our superintendent of public works, Mr. Frank DiMarco.
I really have nothing to mention tonight unless anybody has questions for me.
Okay, thank you, Frank. What I'd just like to point out is, before I move on to our other department reports, thank you to the Tuckahoe Police Department for delivering...
to the Tuckahoe Police Department for delivering meals, uh, this past week to our seniors, our Tuckahoe seniors, as well as the face masks. I'd also like to thank that new, um, business that has yet to open, but yet, uh, was kind enough to donate his services and food and cooking these meals that was delivered to our, our seniors here in Tuckahoe by our police department. So thank you, Chief, and thank you to the members of your department for their fine work. And Frank, again, I'd just like to congratulate you and your department on continuing to provide these garbage pickups and keeping our village looking as good as it does these days despite what we're going through, so thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, with that, Camille, do you have anything for us?
Yes, I have one thing to say. Um, the state has required me to notify them of all unpaid taxes greater than one year, as they will not be eligible for basic star exemption. This is something they have never done before. Yes. So I just wanted people to know out there, if they're greater than one year, they're going to be losing their star exemptions.
Is there any, um, any site that we can send them to for more information or how to follow up on this that we know of?
Well, that actually, the star goes through East Chester, so the assessor would be doing that because that's school taxes.
Okay. All right, thank you, Camille.
Thank you.
Gary Gersten, do you have anything for us, sir?
Nothing tonight, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. David?
Sure, just want to apologize for the technical difficulties on this meeting tonight. I am, what I'm trying to do is just mute everyone and kind of unmute who needs to be unmuted because there's definitely somebody that's having a problem out there, so I apologize, but I'm, I'm trying to work on it on my end. Um, just real quick here at Village Hall, um, we are still closed through the end of the week. Um, we are definitely looking at the mayor's orders of his phased-in approach to kind of open up. We've already started doing that, but again, our doors are still locked here and we'll make an assessment towards later in the week, um, how we do open up. But just to let everyone know, um, taxes are coming up next month and we have done some modifications to our clerk's office and the receiver of taxes office. Um, but we are encouraging most people not to come to Village Hall to mail their taxes in if possible. And that's it.
Thank you, David. Uh, that'll bring us to miscellaneous business and that could simply be that our next village board meeting will be held June eighth. I will presume via the Zoom platform, June eighth at seven o'clock. And with that, I will go to our board of trustees member reports and we're going to begin with trustee Omira Andino.
Mayor, thank you, Mayor. Uh, given the difficulties we're having, I'm going to try to keep it short. Um, first and foremost, I would like to let everyone know and thank, uh, Norma Drummond, the Westchester County Commissioner of Planning, who came and spoke with us at our, uh, village work session on Thursday. And one of the things that she stressed is the importance of us responding to the census, so we just want to reiterate that, uh, we want people to respond to the census. It equates to twenty-five hundred dollars a person, um, in, in services for Tuckahoe, and so we're talking about four hundred people, as she mentioned, that's a million dollars ahead. So we could just really encourage everyone to please respond to the census. If you're not sure how to do it, contact anyone on the board and/or Village Hall even, and we will, we will help you. Okay, um, also, just a couple of updates, um, reminders for people to continue to wear face coverings, um, you know, their masks in public. Uh, trustee Howell is going to be doing a talk on, uh, COVID nineteen testing and, um, it's just really important for people not to get, not to get lax. In, to, as of today, we had three hundred and twenty-seven people tested positive in Tuckahoe, uh, with COVID nineteen and seven are active, um, compared to East Chester, which had four hundred, has, has four hundred and thirty-one people who've tested positive and Bronxville sixty-two. So this is not behind us yet and I don't want for people to get lax. Uh, we should stay vigilant. Also wanted to thank the county for, um, giving us some PPE that we have distributed to seniors and, uh, to our departments that needed, and I'm not sure who else, David, we distributed masks to. Um, I think also churches, some of the churches got some. So we wanted to let the village know that we are, we're doing our part to try to make sure that people are safe. If you, um, anyway, so that's that. I won't get into the other stuff. Um, one of the things that, that the, the county executive today talked about in his briefing was a, uh, ribbons of remembrance, um, grow that he, that they have started and they're, so they're inviting people in Yonkers to use purple ribbons to make notations on in remembrance of somebody who may have passed away. And, um, I like that idea and I, you know, I know I've spoken about it at a couple of meetings, but I would like for us to move on allowing residents some opportunity in some way to acknowledge and to remember, um, any residents or loved ones that they have lost. Okay, uh, let me just tell you a little bit about some of the, uh, programs that are still being held by the library. Um, so there, I, as I mentioned before, on May thirteenth, which is this Wednesday, um, our very own trustee Renee Howell will be doing a special program on COVID nineteen testing. She'll be discussing what the stars COVID COV-two virus is, how does it cause COVID nineteen? What are the different tests available? And she'll talk about why it's so difficult to get access to testing. Um, we'll also have on May fourteenth, a digital literacy class, and given the times that we're living in, um, it's important for most people, most of us to understand how to use, uh, the digital and virtual platforms to be able to communicate with others. There's a, um, a raising backyard chickens Zoom class that's being held by Heather and Eddie Chapdeline and their sons Ethan and Hayden. Uh, they're going to give you a peek at how they're raising, uh, chickens in their backyard and a large turkey. Um, there's also a May book club, um, Enchanted April, that's going, the movie is going to be shown on May twenty-ninth and on May thirtieth, they'll discuss the book club if you're interested in that. And then there are some recurring programs for the teens, children, and some of the adults. And so, um, I just encourage you, as I always do, to go to the website. If you, uh, register for any of these programs, you will get an email with the, the invite to be able to get into the Zoom class. And if it asks you for a library card number, uh, don't be discouraged, just put NA and it'll go through. I know a few people mentioned that they didn't participate in some of the programs because it asked for a library card and they didn't have one. And, um, I'll keep it there. That's it for me.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Lang?
Um, I did want to mention, I'm pleased that now as a board, we're moving forward in regards to the stacking of the county buses in Depot Square, so, uh, I'm looking forward to getting that rectified. And, uh, you know, just, uh, to all the parents that have become overnight teachers, just, you know, hang in there, it's, it'll be done soon. Uh, that's really all I have, Mr. Mayor. And, uh, you know, to all of Tuckahoe, hang in there, it'll all be over soon and, you know, we'll be back. That's it.
Thank you. Trustee Howell?
Yes, thank you. Um, it looks like we're going to be, uh, able to start up the planning and zoning board again, so, um, this week on, uh, Wednesday, the zoning board will meet. They have one item on the docket and that is a new driveway at Lake Avenue. Next week, the planning board will meet, um, Tuesday, and they have, uh, two items on the, um, agenda. One is the daycare on twenty-one Columbus and then, um, there is, uh, an architectural revision for, uh, one twenty-five Marble Bell. I also wanted to remind everybody that we have heard from the governor that the village elections will be held on September fifteenth. Um, I'm sure we'll, uh, be hearing more details about that. The election ballots are supposed to, uh, proceed as they were in, in March, uh, even though they have the wrong date on them. And, uh, also wanted to remind everybody that the governor has, uh, given the date of June ninth for school board elections, um, and those will be conducted all by mail, so you should contact your local school board, um, for more details on that. Also wanted to, uh, echo what trustee Andino said about the census, you know, we talked tonight about grants and a, a lot of that grant money, um, that we apply for as a village is based on data like we get from the census, so, so it's really, um, very important. And, uh, then lastly, I just wanted to, um, thank Mayor Luise, um, for, uh, allowing us to take, uh, a little bit of a different approach, uh, with getting the hotel its temporary certificate of occupancy. Um, trustee Andino and I were able to, um, uh, help, uh, with that process a little bit and, um, I also wanted to thank, uh, David Burke and really Gary Gersten, who handled, uh, and really pushed for a lot of communications, uh, to have that resolved in our building department, so I just wanted to acknowledge them for what they did. And I have a report from Gary Byrne, the hotel manager, that they have had ninety-seven six stays, uh, since the temporary certificate, um, and the soft opening occurred, uh, last Thursday, and so we have four hundred dollars of tax revenue from that. So, uh, we're really looking forward to seeing that climb. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Trustee Lee?
Trustee Lee?
Very good news right now. Um, as of recent, we lost three of our members of our Tuckahoe senior citizens. I want to express my condolences to their families of the three members who lost their lives. Two were from COVID and one was from complications of a surgery. Um, please, everybody, just follow the safety precautions. Um, you know, don't forget your mask, don't forget your gloves. And, uh, I really want to thank Rosita and Mag, Maggie Mathemara from Winter Hill. Um, they had made a hundred and twenty masks to donate to our senior citizens, so we're going to get those out this week. Um, they're reusable, they sewed them by hand, they're beautiful, I have them at my house, so we'll be doing that this week and, um, that's really it. And just, you know, please, don't forget local businesses, they're offering all kinds of specials, uh, we've been doing a lot of ordering out lately, we got to really help them and get our business, I get our businesses up on their feet again. Everybody stay safe and we'll see you soon. That's all I have.
All right, thank you. And that'll, um, I will keep mine short. As we all know, this, this pandemic has caused more havoc than any of us could have ever imagined and, uh, as a result, we're not going to be able to commemorate, uh, police officers as we usually do in the month of May. Uh, that's a ceremony that's going to have to be, um, put off for a future date. And along those same lines, we also will not be able to honor our veterans on Memorial Day and the ceremonies that we usually have. But I can tell you that the veterans have put together a video compilation, um, involving some of the students that were involved last year, as well as melding it with, uh, the theme that they wanted to commemorate this year, which was the, uh, Tuckahoe residents who made the supreme sacrifice during the Korean War. So I know they're going to be putting together something that will be, uh, broadcast on our local cable channel, so please, uh, keep your eyes and ears posted for that. Um, I still continue to have a virtual webcast with residents on Wednesday, uh, beginning every Wednesday at ten AM, so again, uh, it's just click, go to the village website, click on the news tab, and that will bring you into the meeting with the mayor on Wednesdays at ten AM. Uh, as was said prior, and I will repeat, the census is most important to us here in the village of Tuckahoe. It is a very, very simple process to complete. It takes no more than ten minutes. It has nothing to do with your immigration status, your citizen status, has nothing to do with that. All the information that you provide is kept confidential, so please, for the sake of us all, please participate in the census. Um, I also earlier had mentioned, um, and congratulated our police and DPW for their fine work during this epidemic, and I would be completely negligent if I didn't mention the staff at Village Hall that continues to come in every day and still provide these services to our residents here in the village. So I commend everyone, every employee and every department head for what they're doing during these most difficult times. And I will repeat again what was said earlier by trustee Lee and trustee Andino, keep your face covered. If you can't do that, at the very least, please maintain safe social distancing from them, from those folks that are practicing safe behaviors. Um, that's all I have. And with that, it will be the second opportunity for anyone to address the board on any item.
Okay. Hi Greg, it's Virginia Mar Seattle again. Haven't talked this.
Yes, Virginia.
Any public meeting in my life. Um, I just wanted to, uh, thank John Costanzo and the police department for, um, delivering meals to the veterans. Um, the community fund of Bronxville, East Chester and Tuckahoe funded it, Tucked Away made the food, Martine's Bakery had a little bag of cookies and, you know, the veterans are so often overlooked, especially the Vietnam veterans, of which he is one. Um, and I just wanted to tell you how touched we were that, uh, you know, that, that he's remembered for his service. So John, thank you so much because he was the one that got the meals actually to us.
Absolutely, John. It's fantastic.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're very welcome, Mayor. If I could just, my sound's a little better, so if you don't mind.
Sure.
That a little bit. So first of all, I do want to thank Mike Rosa from Tucked Away. Our most recent delivery of meals was to the veterans. We gave, I think about 80 or 90 meals out to the three local veterans groups, the AC Jeffries in Tuckahoe, the Sam, Lieutenant Colonel Sam Duranzo post in Eastchester and the Leroy Gregory American Legion post in the north end of Eastchester. So it was so gratifying for the members of my department to get out and visit with the veterans. We appreciate not only their service to our country while they were in the service, but what they do for our community every day, keeping the memory of our veterans and that have served and, and have perished in, in the various wars alive in, in our memories, in our hearts. So it was very, very gratifying for our department to be able to do that. We couldn't do it, do it without the community fund of Eastchester, Bronxville and Tuckahoe, who allowed us to use some funds that we would have used for other outreach programs that were canceled, like the fireworks and, and our Bike Day, and use those funds for the meals. So it was, it was a great opportunity for us to get out into the community. And so to all our veterans, we, we appreciate not only what you've done in the past, but what you continue to do. And we look forward to hopefully do another round of meals in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Do you have any other members of the public that would like to address the board?
Yes, this is Irene Norman. How's everybody?
Hello, Irene. How are you?
Hi. I'm doing pretty good, Greg. I want to address the issue of the backup of the sewers to Shiloh. I know the pastor Gerald and family more folks you guys about the
Yes.
We had to do this. The first time the sewers are backed up. And they're really concerned because what, you know, with churches being closed and the money is not coming in like we're due. And it's, and we incurred a great expense and the members are wondering what the village can do to reimburse us for that expense.
Are we talking about the sewer line, Irene?
Um, I don't know what the exactly is the sewer line. They called to us and the sewer backed up into our bathrooms and came out through the toilet.
Right, right. Yeah, we were down there. Mr. DiMarco, David and myself, we were down there last week and spoke with Reverend Gerald about that.
Yeah.
Frank, if you're on the line, if you could sort of clarify this for Irene. It's, it's a, I want, I'll repeat with Frank. Go ahead, Frank. You're on.
If you want to continue, I'll back you up.
Okay. Well, it's a check valve that needs to be replaced or not replaced to be installed because with the back with the backup occurring, it's a low lying area of the village.
Yeah, we perform, we perform a general service. We just maintain the lines. You know, we can't guarantee what everybody's going to throw into these lines. The only time a village will be responsible is unless there's construction being done or repairs that are needed. That entire line was just, that entire sewer line was just relined the past seven years. So we know there's nothing wrong with it. It just, it just needs a general maintenance. I haven't gotten any past calls from Shiloh Baptist Church stating that there were floods like this. I did recommend putting a check valve in so this would never happen again. That basement is so low, they're at the same level as our sewer lines. So a building like this is susceptible to flooding anytime there's a small backup within our sewer systems. We cannot guarantee that this would not happen again. It's truly not our responsibility. When constructions of this type of developments are made, a check valve is appropriate for a situation like this. I recommend the check valves to many other people that have experienced flooding and sewer backups. They've never had it again. Again, we just perform maintenance. We're really not responsible for a sewer backup. Again, unless there's construction being done, which would cause it, or a repair that's needed that was never done. And, and in this situation, there's really none of the two above. So I recommended that they call me. The reverend would call me every four, every three months, whatever he prefers. Just give me a reminder call and we'll go out there and then clean the entire system. You know, so this would never happen again. But I can't guarantee what people are throwing in their sewers. It's just amazing what I find there.
Okay, thank you, Frank.
Frank and, and Gary, is there a insurance remedy that the church could seek to pay for the, for this check valve to be installed?
Yeah, there's a person I've heard of it, so I don't know. I haven't looked into it. You know, I don't know, I don't know much what happened and we'll try to figure it out. I can get back to you on that.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else out there? Okay, if that is the case, I will make a motion to adjourn this meeting. Do I have a second?
Okay.
Okay, Tuckahoe. Until next time, we'll see you June 8th. Stay well.